I can't climb these stairs now. Get on my dad, he got the eighty-three. Yeah, so you need someone to have you a car? Car for a little bit. Okay, good. I'll see you, okay? Let me know, okay? I'll be the motion maker, though.
Okay, Wendell, I'm live over here and I'm going, but where's that at? Chair yourself, get yourself. Yeah, I'm muted. Oh, I'm not?
I didn't see the drinks over there.
He didn't know where you were gonna sit.
Oh, that's good, good idea.
You can do the bubbles, but we found an age of cholera that we should... Love in the age of cholera, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, if they're here to speak on the applicant with the applicant. Well, the applicants don't have green cards. Applicants and people who feel like green cards can come in. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably me right there.
They can listen after.
And you have to click on it and share your video.
I understand how you can do it on this one. Uh, let's see, I can figure that part out, I think. For my video.
There you go.
Okay?
Yeah.
That's what we...
Uh, those have to, he's holding those up there.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Little Rock Planning Commission's somewhat delayed meeting, but with all this technology, we're trying to get everything done right. This will be an adventure for everybody involved because it's...
Really close. Real close. There you go.
It'll be an adventure for everybody involved because this is the first time we've done a virtual meeting, so bear with us. With that, I'd ask the staff to call the roll.
Chairman Latour.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Benton.
Here.
Commissioner Brock.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Ramon.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
And Commissioner Vogel.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. You've been provided with a copy of the minutes. A motion would be in order for their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and said to approve the minutes, all in favor. Oops, we're gonna have to do a roll call on these, so, on these votes, so bear with us.
Commissioner Barry.
All in favor of the approval of the minutes. As they call your name, please signify your vote.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Commissioner Benton.
Yes.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks. Vice Chair Hamilton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Chairman Latour.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
With that, thank you. With that, uh, would you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Followed is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission subdivision Agenda of May fourteenth, twenty twenty. You have one item on consent withdrawal. Item B, file number Z forty-four seventy-four A, Unitarian Universalist Church, revised CUP, located at eighteen eighteen Reservoir Road. On April second, twenty twenty, the applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting withdrawal of this application, and staff supports that request. Next, you have items on consent deferral. Item D, file number Z ninety-four sixty-seven, Artis Place twenty nineteen PRD, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Rock Street and East Tenth Street. The Historic District Commission must approve a certificate of appropriateness for this development prior to consideration by the Planning Commission. This matter will be considered by the Historic District Commission no earlier than June eighth. Staff recommends deferral of this item to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Item number three, S eighteen seventy-four, Bairdina Estates Preliminary Platte, located north of Chenal Valley Drive, north of the Germaine and Salone neighborhoods. The applicant requested this item be deferred in order for additional issues to be addressed. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Item number eleven, Z fifty-eight seventeen J, Cantrell West Restaurant Center, short-form PCD, located at fifteen one hundred to fifteen one twenty-two Cantrell Road. The applicant failed to complete notification to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Item number fifteen, Z ninety-five hundred, Goodwin Manor Longform PCD, located at thirty-seven oh eight Garrison Road. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May seventh requesting this application be deferred. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Item sixteen, Z ninety-five oh one, Pedaway Business District, short-form PCD, located at four twelve East Twenty-first Street. The applicant failed to send notices to surrounding property owners. The applicant has requested deferral of this application, and staff supports that request, and deferral of the application to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Item number twenty, Z ninety-five oh eight, Posh Automotive Short-Form PCD, located at eighty-nine hundred Colonel Glen Road. The applicant did not provide responses to the subdivision committee comments in a timely manner, therefore the item must be deferred, and staff recommends approval of the deferral to the next scheduled meeting as determined by staff. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, S eight sixty-seven F nine, Chenal Valley Phases thirty and thirty-one Revised Preliminary Platte, located east of Lamar Strive. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platte, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Staff also recommends approval of the variances to allow advanced site grading, pedestrian trails in lieu of sidewalks, slopes greater than three to one on the southern portion of Phase thirty-one dash two, and the maximum depth of the detention ponds to exceed four feet. Item number one, S six forty-one N, Markham Commercial Subdivision Replatte Preliminary Platte, located eleven four hundred West Markham Street. Staff recommends approval of the proposed platte and subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Staff also recommends approval of the variances to allow the rear setbacks on lots two B through two F to be reduced to the existing building setbacks and to allow for thirty-three parking spaces on lot two D. Item number two, S eighteen seventy-three, lots AR, BR, R, and C of Shoney Subdivision Preliminary Platte, located west of South University Avenue between West Thirty-second Street and Town and Country Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the proposed platte, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the staff in the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Staff also recommends approval of the variance to allow lot C to not have direct access to a public street. Item number four, S eighteen seventy-five, Kirkland Little Rock Preliminary Platte, located southwest of the intersection of Chenal Parkway and Kirk Road. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary platte, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number five, Z nineteen ninety-seven C, Christ Lutheran Colimbarium Revised CUP, located at three fifteen South Hughes Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in sections four and six of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number eight, Z forty-three forty-three M, Saddle Creek Phase Two Revised Short-Form PCD, located northeast of the intersection of Cantrell Road and Ranch Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the revised PCD, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Item number nine, Z forty-four seventy M, Chenal Park Center, Short-Form PCD, located at fifteen one hundred to fifteen one ninety-eight Chenal Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the PCD, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Item ten, Z fifty-six seventeen B, Kirkland Longform PCD, located southwest of the intersection of Chenal Parkway and Kirk Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested long-form PCD, subject to the following conditions: compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff also recommends approval of the requested variance to allow smaller interior landscape islands. Public Works recommends approval of the application with the following conditions: with development of outlot one, sidewalk should be constructed along the west side of Canus, of the Canus Road driveway, along the lot frontage to the west side of Costco Building to provide pedestrian access from Canus Road. With development of outlots two through four, sidewalk should be constructed along the north side of the service easement. Sidewalks should be installed on the east side of the Chenal Parkway driveway with construction of the fuel center, or the west side of the Chenal Parkway driveway with development of outlot four. Sidewalk connectivity should be provided from the sidewalk on outlot four to the proposed sidewalk on the south side of the Kirby Road North driveway. Future access to Canus Road and Chenal Parkway is limited to the approved PCD locations. Amenable directional island should be placed within the Chenal Parkway driveway to prevent left turn movements. The Public Works staff also recommends approval of the advanced grading variance to grade the outlots with construction of the Costco. All advanced graded areas should have vegetation established prior to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. Item number twelve, Z eighty-three forty-nine A, John Bear Neighborhood Open Air Market Short-Form PCD Revocation, located west of South University Avenue and south of West Thirty-second Street. Staff recommends approval of the PCD revocation request. Item fourteen, Z ninety-four ninety-six, Thirty-seventh and Catherine Short-Form PDR, located southeast of the intersection of West Thirty-seventh Street and Catherine Street. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the property to PDR, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. We also received a letter of support from the John Bear Neighborhood Association on this item, number fourteen, and also, item number twelve, we also received a letter from John Barra in support of that item. Item eighteen, Z ninety-five oh four, Bass Commercial Concrete Zoning Site Plan Review, located at Six Remington Cove. Staff recommends approval of the site plan, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff also recommends approval of the variance to reduce the rear setback from one hundred feet to forty feet. Staff recommends the dumpster screening requirement be waived as it will be enclosed within an opaque screen surrounding the lay-down yard. Staff recommends approval of the variance for use of gravel in lieu of asphalt in the lay-down yard with a six-foot perimeter of gravel-to-pave system. Staff also recommends approval of the variance to allow the vehicle area screening as shown on the plan. Item nineteen, Z ninety-five oh five, Lot nine R and AR Capital View Edition Short-Form PRD, located at three twenty-one Rice Street. Staff recommends approval of the request to zone the property to PDR, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the staff and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. Item twenty-one, Z ninety-five oh nine, McLean Loft Short-Form PID, located at ten twenty East Sixth Street. Staff recommends approval of the PID, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. And item twenty-two, A three three seven, seventeen two oh one Canus Road Annexation. Staff recommends approval of the annexation, and that concludes the consent agenda.
You've heard the consent agenda, is there a motion? Uh, I'll ask our former chairman, Craig Barry, if he'd like to make a motion.
A move for approval of the consent agenda, as read by staff with all recommendations.
Second.
I'm sorry, was there a second? I missed it. I'm sorry. Okay, roll call on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Commissioner Benton.
Yes.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks. Vice Chair Hamilton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Chairman Latour.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved.
Consent is approved, we'll go to our regular agenda. And the first item up is item C, which is... And while they're coming in, we'll ask, we'll ask you to go ahead and read the proposal into the record.
Item C, file number Z sixty-four eight B. This is Saint Bartholomew's Church Parish Hall Short-Form POD, located at sixteen twenty-two Marshall Street. The applicant is Ron Woods. The current Saint Bartholomew Church Building Erectory at sixteen twenty-two Marshall Street was constructed in nineteen thirty-one. The church itself is over one hundred years old, having been previously located on Eighth Street and in a building near the current site. The church building and rectory occupy the southern two lots on the west side of Marshall Street between Sixteenth and Seventeenth Streets. The four vacant lots adjacent to the north are also owned by the church, and until the nineteen eighties had single-family homes on them.
Okay, we'll ask, in a minute?
Shuffling pages. Saint Bartholomew Church is requesting approval of a planned office district to allow for construction of a parish hall and associated parking adjacent to the existing church and rectory. The proposed one-story parish life center building will be constructed in two phases. The first phase is fifty-two hundred fifty square feet with a future twelve hundred square foot expansion. Twenty-seven space parking lots located adjacent and behind the proposed parish hall building. The building will contain multipurpose fellowship space, kitchen, restrooms, and church offices. The applicants did submit responses to the issues raised by subdivision committee. Building elevations were provided. The parking lot was modified, eliminated some of the parking spaces, and increase in the land area around two trees proposed to be preserved. No dumpsters been indicated on the plan, so if one is ever added to the site, it must be behind the building and screened to comply with the city code standards. Dumpster service hours would be limited to seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday. All new site lightings be low-level and directional, shielded downward and into the site. The signage should comply with that allowed in office and institutional zones. No fencing is proposed. The parking area will be accessed via a single driveway onto Marshall Street and from the alley behind the property. The alley will be improved from Sixteenth Street south through the entrances to the proposed new parking. The site is located in the Central High Design Overlay District, and there are three variances from the DLD standards. The first is from the ground-level facade requirement. For new construction, at least sixty percent of the ground-floor level facing pedestrian public circulation areas shall be glass windows and/or displays. The proposed building does not comply with this standard on either the north or the east facades. The nature of the building is such that it's not necessary or desirable to have sixty percent of the facade in glass. The material section, the materials of the exterior shell shall be brick or other masonry, wood, or material that resembles wood, such as vinyl siding. The proposed building will have front and side exterior finishes of brick and vertical fiber cement panels. The rear of the building is proposed to be metal panels. The standard parking requirement section, parking requirement shall be fifty percent of that required by Article Six. This sixty-four hundred and fifty square foot building would typically require sixty-four parking spaces in the DLD. Thirty-two spaces are required, and the applicant is proposing twenty-seven with this development. Approval from the city's urban foresters required prior to removal of any trees exceeding fourteen inches in diameter. Two such trees are proposed for removal, and the urban forester has approved the plan. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues. Staff is supportive of the proposed POD. The church has been part of this neighborhood for over a hundred years. Allowing the addition of the parish hall will help the church continue to meet the needs of the church and the neighborhood. Staff believes the building material, facade glass and percentage, facade glass percentage and parking variances are relatively minor. Allowing the proposed use is compatible with uses and development in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested POD and variances, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report.
Okay, now we'll go... Okay, now we'll go. The applicant has up to 20 minutes, and the key word there hopefully is "up to" to tell us why it's a good deal, and there are some people that are going to come in afterwards that are opposed. I have two cards. First off, if the applicant wants to just tell us about the project, that's great. We have two cards in favor and one card from an opposition, so do the podium, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Ron Woods, Woods Group Architects. I'm here representing St. Bartholomew Catholic Church. The last time we came before you all, we were postponed so that we could meet with the Neighborhood Association, and that was a pretty good description of what Monty read, so I'm not going back over the description of what we were doing. But we met with the Central High Neighborhood Association since our last appearance before you all, and the only opposition that was noted at that meeting was the parking situation. So, as Monty indicated, there's 34 parking spaces that would be required by the Central High Overlay District. We have 27, which is basically doing better than the Overlay District requires, because Overlay District wants to cut down on the parking spaces. So instead of having 60-something that the city would require, the Overlay District reduces that to 34. So we reduced it even five more to 27. That's the only sticking point with the Neighborhood Association. They don't want us to have any, and we just can't do that. As was indicated in the description, this church is over 100 years old. They still have a lot of seniors that attend this church. They need to be able to park at the facility, not have to walk a block or two away. Thank you.
We have two cards in favor. Mr. Lindsey?
Yes, sir, my name is Lee Lindsey. I am one of the elders of the church. As has been mentioned, this church has been in the community for over 100 years. This parish hall will be very instrumental, not only to the parish but also to the community. We have several programs that we plan to operate out of the hall that can help our community as far as addressing some of the issues that we have in the community, in the area. As was mentioned in the reading, this is a very vibrant parish, vibrant life there, although we are some, there are a number of senior citizens such as myself, we're also growing. And so, we feel that this hall would allow us to do outreach to the community and allow us to grow and continue to be an integral part of the community and continue to improve our standard of life in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Rocky Herman?
Hello, my name is Rocky Herman, and I'm one of the younger members of the church at age 65. One of the reasons I'm here today is that one of the persons who was in opposition of what we wanted to do suggested, after we met with them, that our members, because they were older, could park across the street and walk, because there was a parking lot there at the older school. That hurts me. I'm a Central High graduate. I'm a realtor, a real estate broker. I've been selling homes in that area for almost 40 years. I can't see a more desired need than this project and what we're attempting to do. One of the projects that we're looking at, that Mr. Lindsey was referring to, we have a project called Feed the Community, and what we're trying to do there is have a series of churches across the city, across the state, across the county, where we serve food freely to people on the same day at the same time. And we're the seed church for this project. We've not been able to do that right now because we don't have the facilities. We have a parish hall that used to be the old St. Bartholomew's School. It's not suitable for our needs. This project will help us to be able to serve the community, and that's all we're looking for, the opportunity to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. There is one in card, y'all can leave now, please, step outside. There's one card that's in opposition, Paul Dodds. Mr. Dodds?
Paul, if you would allow everybody to stay till the end of the item, then they'll have to leave.
One of y'all, y'all are welcome to sit back there, since not very many of you. You want to go? He's already heading out. Up to the podium, thank you.
Sorry about that, gentlemen, it's we learn by doing. Mr. Dodds?
My name's Paul Dodds, I live at 2119 West 17th Street. I'm here to express my support for the parish hall and my concerns about the parking. St. Bartholomew's is an important member of our community, you know, encourage the building of the parish hall and all of the good service work that they're doing in the hall. I've sent out a PowerPoint presentation to the planning board members. I didn't realize that the deadlines had changed and that I wasn't able to do a PowerPoint here, but there's a great deal of parking in the neighborhood. The diocese owns 12,000 square feet of asphalt directly across the street from the St. Bartholomew's Church. They have not been willing to consider using that as parking. Instead, they want to take a vacant lot with a beautiful old oak tree in the middle of the neighborhood and turn that into parking, which I believe is unnecessary. I own a house directly across the street from it, which I would like to renovate. It will be much more difficult to do so if it's just looking at a parking lot. There is a huge amount of parking in the neighborhood. One of my neighbors counted that within a block of the parish hall, the proposed parish hall, there's 100 on-street parking spaces. The pictures that I sent you earlier in February, and again today, will show empty streets all around the church. It'll also show you pictures of houses, unsafe and vacant houses, also around the church which needs renovation, which will be difficult to do, and also show you pictures of a huge two, there used to be two blocks of homes right across the street from St. Bartholomew's, which is now parking for Arkansas Baptist College, that is also empty now and empty most of the time. The representatives of the church were unwilling to consider discussing possible parking sharing with the college in these empty lots, and those empty lots used to be houses. When I moved to the neighborhood 16 years ago, there was a neighborhood there. The city, by approving parking there, has allowed the demolition of a neighborhood, and it will basically do the same thing again. I understand the needs of older residents who have limited mobility. There will be 11 handicap parking spaces behind the facility. There hasn't really been any discussion about the actual need, whether that's sufficient or not. No discussion about valet parking. I just, it is another knock, it's another tooth knocked out of the face of a neighborhood that's had a lot of teeth knocked out of it. So, again, strong support for the parish hall, strong support for the church and its mission, and just would ask that they consider using their 12,000 feet of asphalt across the street for parking instead of taking a residential lot and asking for the right to turn a residential lot into yet another parking lot in the heart of our neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, either in person or at home, do you have any questions for either the applicant or the opponent? Hearing no questions?
If I could just ask one comment in the future, if you could please ask people to respect social distancing. Everyone was huddled around the television, the one television screen here in close difference. I have not come out and done anything like this for about two months, and I did not feel safe coming here, so I'd ask that in the future, please try to encourage participants to respect social distancing. I've taken pictures of it. It really was dangerous. Thank you.
Barry, would a motion be in order?
Yes, Mr. Chair. A move for the approval of the application with all staff recommendations.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, if you'd call the roll on this question, please.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Item 6, you'd read that for us, please?
Item number 6, File Number Z5454D, Little Rock School District, McClellan K-8 School Conditional Use Permit located at 9417 Guyer Springs Road. The owner of the property is Little Rock School District, and Chris East, Cromwell Architects and Engineers, is the applicant. The John L. McClellan High School campus currently occupies the R2 Zone site located at 9417 Guyer Springs Road. The Little Rock School District is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the site to be redeveloped for a kindergarten through eighth grade school campus. The redevelopment will consist of one three-story school building where the former high school building is currently located. Paved parking will be located on the east and west sides of the proposed building. Stacking spaces and drop-off pickup spaces will be located on all sides of the building. Two driveways from Guyer Springs Road will serve as access to the school campus. The school redevelopment will be located north of the existing drainage way which runs east-west through the property. The existing football field portion of the school campus will remain. The new school facility will include kindergarten through middle school classrooms. The classroom numbers noted in the agenda report are not correct, and the applicant will have those here today. There will be approximately 100 staff personnel for the school campus. Parking proposed and existing will be provided on the site and will meet ordinance requirements based on the number of classrooms and employees. There'll be one ground managed sign placed on the property along the Guyer Springs Road frontage. The ground sign will be a monument type sign with a height of five feet and an area of approximately 40 feet. There'll be wall signage on the west building facade facing Guyer Springs Road. The wall signage will have an area of 387 square feet. The proposed signs will conform with ordinance standards. The proposed new school building will have an overall height of 49 feet. This building height will conform with Section 36156A1A of the city zoning ordinance. This section allows maximum building height of 75 feet for public or semi-public buildings, hospitals, or schools when increased building setbacks are provided, which is the case with the proposed school buildings. Increased setbacks are proposed along all property lines, which does allow the 49-foot building height. The applicant is requesting one variance with the proposed development. The applicant is requesting a variance from the buffer provisions of Section 36522B2, which requires a minimal land use buffer width of 45 feet along the north property line. There is a land use buffer width of 17 feet 8 inches along the majority of the north property line. The buffer drops to approximately four feet along the entry drive, at the entry drive at the northwest corner of the property. The buffer width is over 45 feet at the northeast corner of the property. The existing school site has a land use buffer width of approximately 15 feet along the majority of the north property line. Staff is supportive of the requested conditional use permit to allow redevelopment of the existing McClellan High School campus to a new kindergarten through eighth grade school facility. Staff views the request as reasonable. The existing school campus has been part of this overall neighborhood for over 50 years. The proposed development will be a quality redevelopment of the existing school campus, and staff believes the new school campus will continue to be compatible with the neighborhood and should have no adverse impact on the area. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, including the variance for a reduced land use buffer subject to the following conditions: Compliance with the conditions as found in Paragraphs 4, 5, and 6 of the Agenda Staff Report. Any site lighting must be low level, shielded, and directed away from adjacent properties, and any dumpster areas located on the site must be screened as per ordinance standards and serviced only during daylight hours.
Okay, I have one card in favor and one card opposed. In favor, Dr. Michael Poore, if you'd take the podium, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the time, and I'll make this very brief, and really just wanted to make sure that we were here tonight to answer any questions regarding this matter. We have been working on what we call our blueprint for the Little Rock School District since I arrived, which now is four years, and this has always been a component, and it really puts an emphasis on trying to move us out of Cloverdale into a better facility that we know we need to do something about Cloverdale. And so, going, moving Cloverdale and then several elementaries consolidating into a brand-new campus for kids in the southwest, we think it'll make a difference not only for those kids but actually for the community. We've got a great partnership with our architect and our contractor. We don't have any money yet, but we've got the right plan in place once we get those funds, and we ask for your support tonight, and are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing non, Troy Lehey has another point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Little Rock County Commissioner and staff. My name is Troy Lehey, and I am a resident of southwest Little Rock. Excuse me. I'm opposed to this McClellan School project. And the question has come up, what about sex offenders? There's apartment complex north of there, apartment complex south of there, and both of them have some sex offenders in it. Has the district made any arrangements to get those people, sex offenders, out of those apartment complexes? And, you know, with young children coming in, five, six, seven years old, how would you like for some young mother to come up to you someday crying tears in her eyes and say, "If you had not approved this with those sex offenders by it, my baby would still be alive today."
Mr. Chair, could we be germane to comments from the podium for the application, please?
Troy, we've looked into the, the city attorney's office is looking into that situation, but that is not a part of this application. There are state laws on the books regarding sex offenders, and if they reside there and they own or occupy prior to the school being there, then they're allowed to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, that's good advice. I'll take it if I want to.
You're stood.
Okay, but if some young mother comes up to you someday with tears in her eyes and says, "My baby would still be alive if y'all hadn't approved of that," and Sean, I want to get that in there. I request... I request, requestfully, request this item be delayed until we have time for public meetings, and school boards can come out and meet with the neighborhood people and explain all these stuff, and the attorneys can fulfill that deal and all that kind of stuff. Now, getting down to my part that I know a little bit more about. Myself and some other citizens noticed in the write-up that kindergarten was allotted six classrooms. Elementary had 71 classrooms, and middle school had 15. We were concerned about the number going from 71 elementary down to 15 middle school. One or two things is gonna have to be, one, they're gonna be overcrowded in middle school. From 71 down to 15, or two, a lot of students are gonna be transferred to another school. On the site plan, oh, I'm back up a little bit. I'm sorry. Telephone conference yesterday with Superintendent Poore and staff of the Little Rock School District, they indicated that they did not know about the classrooms being given. That's in the write-up. They did not know that. They didn't know where they came from. The site plan does not show a right-of-way for Guyer Springs Road, center line, width, type of payment, curb, and gutter, and sidewalk. For Guyer Springs, it does not show the name of streets intersecting the Guyer Springs. It shows a new four-lane street intersecting Guyer Springs along the north of the property. The building at 9104 Guyer Springs Road is on lots 15, 16, 17, and South Gate subdivision owned by Little Rock School District. The property lines are not shown on the site plan. I suggest that the school district consult a security fence around their property to prevent non-students from entering the campus. A gate for children can be constructed on McClellan Road and a gate with a knockbox on it for the fire department at the same location. The survey indicates that part of this area is in the 100-year flood zone. I could not find the base flood elevation on the plans. I suggested to Superintendent Poore yesterday that they consider raising the floor of the building at least a foot, just to be on a safe side. In the event of a flood of the magnitude of the 1978 flood, the South Drive to and from this property will be underwater. Now, that means that you cannot go in and out the South driveway during this flood time. People are gonna be wanting to go to the school to pick up their children, and some of the children are gonna wanna walk home because they live nearby. From experience in 1978 flood, I would recommend that the school keep those children inside the building. And I would still respectfully request that y'all delay this project until they can get some of these items squared away and cleared up on the site plan and also on the sexual offenders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Dr. Poore, did you care to address, your option, you could address it or not?
Thank you. Very quickly, we did get to meet with this gentleman yesterday in a phone conference and did talk to him and tried to address some of his concerns. I appreciate the comment about sexual offenders. Obviously, we are concerned about the safety of all of our students and when this building, and if it gets built, we will work, you know, with the city and the community to make sure we have a safe environment. The other thing is, he suggested having community meetings, and I want you all to know that we've been very intentional about community meetings. Community meetings that took place initially in 2016 and 17, which led to the closure of five campuses, but it also outlaid this plan to renovate McClellan High. And then we had the big blueprint plans that occurred in the last academic school year of 1819 that then created the plan to move forward with a new McClellan and a K-8, and having that be our number-one thing in terms of new construction. We have worked with the, we can answer questions if need be on, you know, how we're looking at drainage and the perimeter of the property as well as entrance and access if need be.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Yes, sir?
As I noted during the presentation, the number of classrooms that was given to us was incorrect, and I believe the applicant has the correct number of classrooms.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Monty. Well, I guess to first address the number of classrooms, that number was misinterpreted from the application. That is, the number of parking spaces required for the classrooms. So we require 71 parking spaces for each of the classrooms, as well as an additional 71 for all the teachers and employees. So that number is based on what the requirements are for our CUP application, not the actual number of classrooms. However, I will give you those correct numbers. So he is correct, we have six kindergarten classrooms. We have 34 first through fifth grade classrooms, and then we have 44 sixth through eighth grade classrooms, for a total of 84 new classrooms. I'll be happy to address any of the other comments if you'd like. Monty, do you have that presentation by any chance? That's probably going in the weeds. I'll stay out of there. Just to reinforce what Dr. Poore said, Superintendent Poore, we have had multiple community meetings, and I do have some of the comments as well as presentations, oh, we gave during that time.
Could I use this? Could I touch this, sort of go through that?
Well, I'll keep going. But there are some, there is documentation in this presentation about some of the presentations that we made to the community. In terms of the site plan boundary that is included on the application, in terms of the base flood elevation, that he is correct, that is not indicated on the site plan, that would be included on our grading plan, in which case we do indicate where the 100-year flood is, where the flood plain and the floodway elevations are, and he is correct about the southern edge. So that is one of the reasons why we brought in a lot of the traffic at the northern edge. In terms of the perimeter fence, we do have a perimeter fence. It is lockable, and it does have a knocks box on it at that northeast corner, excuse me, northwest corner for fire, what am I trying to say? Firefighter access. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions. I hope that covered everything.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? One question. I remember the 1978 flood like it was yesterday. It was pretty devastating. A lot of kids got, were killed during that flood. My question is, is how does the site plan address that? I heard you talk about the, I think I'm right, in the southern part, the northern part, not the southern part. Does the fixture, the school itself, is there any danger to the physical structure?
No, sir. No, sir. So what he's talking about is, the existing building has two different levels. There's the south edge, which is five foot four different from the northern edge of the building. So what's existing is that gym and the practice gym, and then the academic side to the north. So what we're doing is raising the south side, that five foot four, further out of the flood plain. The, so hopefully that.
Thank you.
Will cover that edge.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the application with all staff recommendations and comments just given.
They're seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. If you'd call the roll, please, sir.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven. I have one card in opposition to item seven.
Item seven, file number Z 2246C. The residence is at Pettaway Short Form POD located at 2020 Vance Street. Ron Woods is the applicant. An application to rezone this site from C3 General Commercial to O3 General Office and O3 General Office to PCD to redevelop the property to a mixed-use development was submitted and withdrawn in 2013. A PDR was approved by the Board of Directors in 2016 to allow for the reuse of the existing building as elderly housing. This development was never completed. The proposed project consists of the renovation of the existing eight-story structure to a high-rise multifamily residential building, the addition of a five-story residential annex, and the renovation of an existing pre-engineered building to an urgent care medical office. The eight-story high-rise would house 81 one-bedroom units, and the proposed five-story annex would have 15 two-bedroom units. A total of 110 parking spaces, six of which are accessible or on the site. Additional parking, additional property is under the same ownership across Vance Street to the northeast in front of the high-rise. The owners are amenable to providing additional parking at that location. A revised site plan and responses were provided by the applicant after subdivision committee. The project is not, the project is not proposed as an age-restricted development, but is a multifamily development to be completed in a single phase. The clinic building is anticipated to be subdivided into an out parcel. Additional proposed uses would be a laundromat, general professional office, or maintenance shop associated with the multifamily development. An exercise room and resident lounge are proposed as amenities. The new five-story residential annex is proposed to have a height of 64 feet and a combined area of 18,930 square feet. It is intended to be for one or two, it is intended for there to be one or two onsite office staff personnel. A dumpster for the residential buildings is provided in the rear of the existing structure. It will be screened as required by the zoning ordinance. A dumpster and medical waste area is to be added to the northwest corner of the proposed urgent care facility. It will be screened as per ordinance requirements also. A 20-foot radial dedication of right-of-way will be provided at the intersection of Vance and 21st Streets. Also, the right-of-way dedicated and improvements made to East 21st Street will be made to East 21st Street in front of the property. Driveways will be evaluated and reconstructed as needed to provide an ADA-compliant pathway from the right-of-way or sidewalk to the main building entrance. The applicant is requesting to reduce the number of parking spaces from 130 to 130 from the required 150 under the zoning ordinance. Each apartment unit is required to have one and a half parking spaces yielding 144 parking spaces, and the urgent care facility is proposed to have six, based upon six spaces per doctor. An additional parking area containing 22 spaces has been added to the east across Vance Street. This lot may be reduced in number based on the landscaping requirements. The applicant suggests that the reduced number of parking spaces will be sufficient, as 81 of the dwelling units are one-bedroom and are likely to only have one vehicle. Staff supports the reduction of all street parking spaces to be provided to 130 to be provided in combination of the existing parking area and the new parking area to be constructed in compliance with all standards and comments. Public works has indicated that the applicant will need to work with District Four of Arkansas Transportation Department to obtain permits for improvements within the state highway right-of-way, such as Service Road and the street located to the south of the parking lot. Also, the existing street to the south of the parking lot is one-way westbound. Therefore, vehicles from Vance Street cannot access the parking lot. Signage, stripe, and striping must be provided to prevent left turn movements of vehicles exiting the parking lot. Sidewalks with appropriate handicap ramps are required to be constructed adjacent to Vance Street in accordance with Section 31175 of the Little Rock Code and the Master Street Plan. ADA-compliant pedestrian access should be provided from the parking lot to the entrance of the property. Landscape comments on the revised plan state that the new parking lot must designate 8% of vehicle use area for green space, and this green space must be evenly distributed throughout the parking area. The minimum size for interior landscaped area is 150 square feet for developments of 150 or fewer parking spaces. Interior aisles must be a minimum of seven and a half feet in width. Trees shall be included in the interior landscaped areas at a rate of one for every 12 parking spaces. Perimeter landscape strips are required along any side of a vehicle use area that abuts adjoining property or the right-of-way of any street. This street shall be, this strip shall be nine feet. This property, being located in the mature area, allows a 25% reduction in the perimeter requirements. The minimum perimeter with adjacent, to adjacent property lines is six feet nine inches. The perimeter is deficient. Portions along the north and east are deficient, and a variance from the City Beautiful Commission may be required as a follow-up to this application. Staff is supportive of the redevelopment of the property for multifamily residential use and the urgent care clinic as proposed. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the property to POD, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in Paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis in the Agenda staff report.
Okay. Would the applicant care to address this?
Afternoon again, Ron Woods, and I'm here with the owner, A.J., Mr. A.J. Gilbert. And he has a 3D rendering. I hope you all, I sent that to Alex. Hopefully, it kind of got around to you all. But if you, if you hadn't been able to see it, he has a 3D rendering of what the project looks like. This is going to be a very beneficial project, not only to the neighborhood, but to the city of Little Rock. This building has sat vacant for years, and it is very visible from I-30. So right now, it's basically an eyesore on I-30, but the plans that we have will, will make it, give it some, not curb appeal, but highway appeal, and it would definitely be a benefit to the neighborhood. Again, it's a residential facility with 81 one-bedroom units and 15 two-bedroom, two-bedroom units. Any questions as far as any other uses Mr. Gilbert can address, but I'll be here to, I can address any questions, other questions that you all may have on the architecture.
Hold that thing up so we can see it.
And a little, little additional history. I'm really excited about this project, number one, because I was a kid when this was done. This was the old red carpet inn that was developed by a group of minority developers back, I think this was the 70s, where I was a kid, but my father was part of this. So it really, it's really kind of grown on me quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one person in opposition. Mr. Jewell?
Good evening. My name is Kason Jewell. I reside at 1813 Pulaski Street. I am also here to represent the Jewell family and the Jewell Group. I have three other siblings, and we have property that is directly... I have three other siblings, and we have property that is directly across the street in close proximity of the red carpet inn whom my daddy built. It was not a minority group. He spearheaded this by himself, and Attorney Mercer was his legal counsel. Let me make this, I have up to twenty minutes. That's correct? Okay. I am opposed to this project because some years back, not too long ago, a few years back or so, the Jewell Group made an effort to try and acquire the building, to make a long story short, for $200,000. Okay? But something funny happened where it went up, it was put on the auction block where developers could try and get it. So, it kind of slipped away from us because we had other exciting ideas for this project or initiative other than, if I'm understanding this right, other than this being another project housing initiative. I have yet to see what this P D R is code to a P O D. Okay? Also, let me point out, there are enough vacant properties, vacant lots or houses scattered all around that could be developed for individual family homes. Okay? We believe in individual family homes, not an entire neighborhood from central all the way over to the airport quietly trying to be acquired by a smaller and smaller number of people. In the past two months or so, I have received letters of interest who are probably acting as a front, I don't know, want to buy a family home, a property that's across the street from the hotel, as well as a family vacant lot that's just a half a block down the street from the hotel as well. Okay? Well, the scheme behind that is to quietly buy the property around something to quiet opposition. Okay? Now, I know there's some questioning in regards to the parking area, but let me give you a little bit of history real quick. Given the number of hotel rooms that the hotel had at the time when it was constructed, the picture that they have shown you where they want to build the other, build their second smaller building for five stories, there used to be two other homes there. Daddy had to buy that additional property so that each hotel room had one, at least one parking space. Okay? I don't want to get into all some of the other details regarding that, but that had to be done. Okay? Now, of course, you can imagine during the early seventies, coming off the moment of the civil rights movement, you know, things were still kind of warm but cooling off. Okay? So, a lot of that was involved. I don't see this as a good fit. Okay? I don't think this is a good fit. Like I mentioned before, we had other ideas that would be more spontaneous and exciting, mixed use, you see. Make this real quick. My sister, she's an Olympian. She won graduate of Central High, went to Howard of seventy-eight on a track scholarship and taekwondo, which is a form of martial arts. She was an N C A A division champion three years straight, her sophomore, junior, and senior year. Went to the eighty-eight Olympics, won a bronze medal, just missed making it to the gold medal round by a technical error. Okay? Then, her man, he was also at the Olympics. He medaled in the men's wrestling. Okay? My oldest brother, he's not here, passed, came up in baseball. We all came up in baseball. We all ran track as well as other sports. Okay? My brother, who's a licensed pharmacist, okay? He was a dynamite pitcher. He had major league talent. Okay? And myself, I came up as a, as a baseball player and track and field. For those of you who may remember the days in the eighties of Eric Mitchell and Bubba Barrow, the three of us were each other's main rivals in one of the most exciting events that has always been in high school track in this state, and that's the high hurdles. Okay? So, we bring a resume ourselves of what we want to try and do that would be more business-oriented. Okay? We don't need this neighborhood to be more and more rental property and apartment complex. If you want a productive neighborhood, you need a neighborhood that have individual And we believe in that. How much time I have left?
Twelve and a half minutes.
Okay. All right. I'll try and shorten up a little bit. I don't know what else. I mean, I know they have their own interests in what they're trying to do, and that's fine, and they have, that's, they're right. Are they, are y'all the architectural group, or is, or is he the actual owner?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was hoping, hoping I could just lay things out for you to reconsider what's all going here. Okay? This whole neighborhood needs help, but it needs individual help, not collective help. Look at what's happening right now across the country. Huh? Okay. All right. I'll wrap this up. Look what's going on right now. The government is trying to, is trying to provide individual help for individual families, not just corporations. Okay? So, I know my others wanted to be here, but they couldn't due to other prior arrangements. So, I think I may go ahead and just end here. May have said enough. Thank you. I'm finished.
That it?
I think that may be it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant has the opportunity to respond, should they care to.
Not quite sure what to respond to. Didn't seem to have objections, any specific objection, but as far as the use that we're providing, we've...
Pull the mic down just a little bit.
Oh, okay. Thank you. As far as the use we've, we're providing, there's, the owner's done a market study which indicates overwhelmingly indicates that the, that the need is there in that community for this type of, this type of use. Did you all have any specific questions that, that we need to respond to that?
We'll find out. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I do, I do have a question of staff and maybe public works. It occurred to me the I-30 corridor work with the highway transportation is coming through. I mean, is this going to be in the, in the right-of-way of all that? I mean, how, how's that going to be affected, your project with I-30 corridor work?
That's for me.
If you want to answer it, or anyone else?
No, it shouldn't be affected at all. I'm pretty sure we would have been informed if we were in the right-of-way of what they were doing.
See? Yeah.
Don't hear from Mr. Hood? Do you know any knowledge of that?
I'm afraid I'm not certain exactly about this property. I have looked at the plans in general and studied them and had some discussions with the R.D. and generally, they're staying within their existing right-of-way. It's a drastic reconstruction of frontage roads widening, changing walls, bridge configuration, but for the most part, it's staying in the right-of-way. And they are just now in the preliminary steps of talking to people about purchasing right-of-way, and the city has gone ahead and donated some of our city street right-of-ways to them already to get that going.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of this application as written and staff recommendations.
There are a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, if you'll call the roll, please.
Chairman Barry?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Barry.
Yeah.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Item, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
Item thirteen, file number Z ninety-one eighty-three A. This is the park site at Wildwood, revised long-form P D R located south of Denny Road and east of the Wildwood, east of Wildwood Place Circle. Thomas Engineering is the applicant for this item. The Wildwood Trails Long-Form P D R was established on March seventh, twenty-seventeen with the approval of ordinance number twenty-one three seventy by the Board of Directors. The proposal was for seventy-one residential lots containing both attached and detached single-family homes. Generally, the western third of the property was not shown on this, was not shown on the site plan as future development and not subdivided. However, this portion was approved for advanced site grading. The developer now seeks to subdivide the remainder of the property to continue the build-out of the site under the same standards, same development standards. This development is a continuation of Phase One of Park Site at Wildwood, and the applicant seeks to, to develop it in the same manner as Phase One. As such, the following standards are proposed: fifteen-foot front building setbacks, Block Three, zero lot lines for the attached quadruplexes and triplexes in Block Three, twenty-foot front platted setbacks, Blocks Two and Four, fifty-foot lot widths on Block Two, five-foot side setbacks, Blocks Two and Four, and thirty-two lot widths for Block Three. The applicant did submit a revised plat after subdivision committee. A fire access road will be provided connecting the cul-de-sac at the termination of Rosemary Way and Safron Circle. Additional right-of-way for Denny Roads to be dedicated and street improvements would be constructed as per the master street plan. Public Works has reviewed the preliminary drainage and grading plans and has found them acceptable. This is the completion of the neighborhood along the pattern set in Phase One. Safron Circle would be finished to form a street encircling the attached single-family homes of Block Three. These homes would have fifteen-foot setbacks from the street, and vehicular access would be through the access easement in the rear. The plat indicates no right-of-way access from Safron Circle to these lots. The number of new attached single-family homes proposed is twelve. The attached single-family residences are to be built on the exterior lots surrounding Safron Circle, shown as Block Two. These lots are to have minimum widths of fifty feet. Variances are requested to provide front setbacks of twenty feet and side setbacks of five feet. On the southern portion of the site, Rosemary Ways to be extended to the west and then to the north, culminating in a cul-de-sac. Lots on Rosemary Way denoted as Block Four are to be a minimum of sixty feet wide, standard in the R-two district. The same variances to reduce front setbacks to twenty feet and side setbacks to five feet are requested within Block Two. Other development standards from the Phase One approval are also brought forward into this phase. Accessory structures and fences are permitted as per the R-two district, and the maximum building height is also as per the R-two district. This development is to be constructed in a single phase. Staff continues to be supportive of this proposed, this proposed development, and it appears that all technical issues have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the revised P D R subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report.
Applicant can has the option of going first and speak on behalf, or you can let the opposition speak and answer them.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Poundell with Thomas Engineering. We'd like to just let the opposition go ahead, and then we'll try to address any of their
Mr. Brooks?
My name is Ted Brooks. We live in Wildwood Place Circle, just adjacent to the new development, and we have concern about the buffer between us and the new sub-development. We have not been able to get any information on what the buffer would be, and that's, that concerns us.
Chairman, as far as the buffer against Wildwood Place Circle, we are plating all the way to our property line, so any kind of buffer would be the, the normal twenty-five-foot rear setback and any kind of fence each individual lot would construct. There is a buffer already platted on, on development of Wildwood Circle, and we're not, we're not imposing on that. Any other questions from the Commissioners?
Any other questions, Commissioners? Not a motion would be in order, please, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the application as written and all staff recommendations, please.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, if you call the roll.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, gentlemen. Marty, this agenda says seventeen would be. Marty, this agenda says 17 would be next.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
Somebody like to speak on it?
There's one person, I believe that's remote, to speak. You want to just allow them to speak? You want me to give a full presentation, or...
There they are.
These are the applicants. Okay. So I'll go and give a presentation.
Obviously, somebody wanted to speak on it, or they wouldn't have pulled at all.
The person is here remotely, through WebEx.
Oh, forgive me. I forgot.
Okay, so I'll go ahead.
Why don't we let the WebEx person speak, and we'll go from there?
Mr. Chair, why don't we let the staff do the presentation on it, on this item? The staff's going to do a presentation?
Okay.
Yeah.
Read away.
Item number 17, file number Z-9503. This is the cottages at the Manor, short-form PDR located southwest of the intersection of Canis Road and LaBelle Drive. Crafton Toll would be the applicants on this application. This 4.05-acre parcel is located south side of Canis Road, west of LaBelle Drive, and is undeveloped. The property is zoned R2. A planned development residential is proposed to allow for the development of 10 duplexes on a cul-de-sac street. Again, this application is for 4.05 acres, zoned R2. The proposed development would include 10 duplex residential structures of approximately 2,900 square feet each, for a total of 20 dwelling units. Each unit would be approximately 1,450 square feet in area. The homes will be one-story and will have a single-car garage. Development of the site will require undertaking a substantial cut-and-fill operation. Modular block retaining walls reaching as high as 20 feet will be constructed to retain the cut-and-fill. The development would take access from a single driveway on LaBelle Drive. This entrance would be gated with a decorative metal gate of 6 feet in height. The private street, measuring approximately 700 feet in length, would have sidewalks on both sides, and onsite surface detention pond would provide stormwater detention. The applicant did submit revisions and additional responses. After the subdivision committee meeting, it was determined that the right-of-way for the extension of LaBelle Drive abutting this parcel was split from this tract without subdivision approval at some time in the past. It appears that the property is under ownership... The property is under the ownership of the remainder of the land, preliminary platted as the remainder of Canis Village subdivision. At the time this property is final-platted, the extension of LaBelle Drive will be dedicated and constructed or eliminated through vision of that subdivision plat. No additional right-of-ways required to be dedicated for Canis Road, with the exception of a 20-foot radial dedication at the intersection with LaBelle Drive. Half-street improvements to Canis Road will be completed, and a 6-foot side sidewalk will be constructed along the length of the property abutting Canis. Preliminary grading and stormwater detention plans have been reviewed by Public Works and found acceptable. The entrance off LaBelle has been modified to provide a turnaround for vehicles prior to the gate and removing the driveway island from the right-of-way and pedestrian crosswalk. Variance has been requested to allow the height of the retaining walls to exceed 15 feet. The grading plan indicates a maximum height of 17 feet, and staff is supportive of that request. The required certification of site distance for the entrance drive has been provided. The location of the driveway has been optimized to maximize site distance from both the intersection of Canis Road and LaBelle Drive and the roundabout to the south of the subject property. The recommendation would be to establish a post 20 mile-per-hour speed limit for this section of LaBelle. The proposed development would consist of, again, 10 duplexes, 20 units total. Front setback would be 20 feet. Buildings have a minimum separation of 15 feet. Units are proposed to be single-story. Subdivision entrance sign has been proposed with a height of 6 feet and area of 32 square feet, which conforms with ordinance requirements. Staff is supportive of the proposed development and believes it's an appropriate use of the property. And staff recommends approval of the PDR subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis in the Agenda Staff Report. And staff did receive a letter of support from the John Bear Neighbors Association.
There was somebody on the WebEx that wanted to speak?
We're having a connection problem.
Go on.
Chair, we lost the person on WebEx. I've called her and tried to send an email to get her back on, but at this moment, there's no opposition on the WebEx for this, nobody for this item. Hold on a second.
Should we move forward, or ask their forgiveness and go one more item?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions about the application. They're just minor. And this is difficult terrain. The retaining wall is going to be, what, 20 feet high? Is that correct?
The initial presentation called for 20 feet, but after subdivision committee, the revised comments, the 17 feet would be maximum.
17 feet. Why is the engineering for retaining wall that high?
I'll have to defer to Public Works on that one.
Okay.
Commissioners, if I may speak?
Yeah.
My name is Travis Tolly. I'm with Crafton Toll. And you're correct. You know, since we didn't meet in April, we've had time to kind of go back at that plan and revise that. And so we're actually looking at around 13 feet on those retaining wall heights.
Yeah.
We've been able to revise that and tighten that up a little bit, and so refine that. And so actually, the variance is not required at this time.
Lot to ask. And this might not be the applicant. You mentioned LaBelle was not properly platted as a street, and I was omitted. So run me through that again, and what is going to happen to LaBelle as it appears on the plat?
Let me refer to the area zoning map.
Yeah, she's on.
If you'll notice, LaBelle, as you get to the roundabout, there's a little stubout to the southwest.
Yes.
And that property, which would be a... The property where there would be a continuation of this street is not owned by these property owners. So the future construction of that street would be with the subdivision of that property to the south, or it would be eliminated. It could be either constructed or eliminated with that subdivision.
All right. So we don't know what's going to happen? It will be constructed or not?
At this point, we don't. We won't know until... See the large undeveloped tract to the south, right there, until that property develops.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we were successful. And Mrs. Harris, I believe, is on WebEx.
Yes.
Where?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm the Secretary of the Property Owners Association for Canis Village Property Owners. And the only question that we had was, is it going to be specific towards a claim as for a residential, or is it going to be for... Is it going to be for 55 and older?
Yep. May I respond?
Yes.
That will be for residents 55 and older. That's correct. Senior independent living.
Okay, wonderful. Well, we're excited about the new development there, and we look forward to speaking with you further for anything else.
Thank you.
Chairman, she spoke, just asked a question about what was the age of 55 and older is what they're looking for. They're excited about that, and so she got her question answered.
Very good. Are there any questions by the commissioners for the applicant? Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the application as written with staff recommendations.
There's second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, if you call the roll.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item 23.
Mr. Chair, item 23 will be presented by Public Works.
Will be what?
Public Works.
Item 23, file number LA-0087, Baseline Road and I-430 advanced grading variance. The project is located on the south side of Baseline Road, west of I-430. The applicant is Glenn National Carriers, represented by Pat McGetrick. The applicant is requesting a variance from the land alteration regulations to advance grade by clearing and filling approximately 7.45 acres of a large 51-acre property on the south side of Baseline Road, west of Interstate 430 at 11501 Baseline Road. The variance would allow staff to issue a grading permit for advanced grading activities without imminent construction or further development in the property at this time. Field materials proposed to be hauled to the site from a nearby construction project. The field area will slope to natural grade at side slopes no steeper than 3 to 1, and the proposal is to clear and fill only the portions of the property identified on the plan that are located within the 100-year floodplain and determined not to be within the floodway or within a jurisdictional wetland. This 51-acre property is currently undeveloped and tree-covered, and is accessed from an existing driveway on Baseline Road. The property is very flat, minimal slopes. To the west is Bush Creek. The Bush Creek floodway is located along the western property line. Nearly the entire site is within 100-year floodplain, and the majority of the property has been determined to be jurisdictional wetlands. It's currently zoned R2. East of the subject property is Interstate 430. East of 430 is the Big Rock Fun Park, zoned I-2, and an undeveloped wooded property, zoned PCD. South of the subject property is Gateway Town Center. North part of the subdivision adjacent to the subject property is the Harley David Motorcycle Dealership and an undeveloped lot. In addition, south of the subject property is property zoned open space, which was donated to the game and fitch for a future nature trail. West of this property is the Bush Creek floodway. In addition to the undeveloped tree-covered floodplain zoned R2, property zoned R2 is also located on the west side of the subject property. North of the subject property is Baseline Road. The applicant has agreed that grading will occur expeditiously, and the site will be stabilized within one year of the issuance of a grading permit. The applicant has provided erosion control plan showing silt flinch and appropriate erosion control measures. The grading plan shows the 7.45 acres to be filled approximately 12 feet in elevation with 3 to 1 side slopes. Buffers will be maintained on all sides of the property. Between 175 and 95 feet wide, undisturbed all along Baseline Road, 335 and 105 feet, varying from 335 to 105 feet, will be maintained along the west property line. The limits of the clearing to the east is over 400 feet from the southern limits, being more than 800 feet. Orange fencing will be installed to delineate these areas that are to remain undisturbed. Staff recommends approval of this advanced grading variance request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraph D of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant care to speak first, or hear the opponent?
I would rather hear the opponent first. That's all right.
Very good. John Hugler, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is John Hugler. I live at 9906 Baseline Road. This whole area is a severe floodplain. Baseline Road gets underwater every time we have a heavy, heavy rain. Interstate 30 gets underwater. All this is happening because people keep encroaching on that floodplain. You start taking out acreage of that collection basin, and next thing you know, it's going to flood even deeper and even more over Baseline. If you build something in there, it'll have to be severely high, and then it will be isolated when it floods. And it will flood. Thank you.
I'm Pat McGetrick, McGetrick Engineering. We have looked at this site, and we do recognize that Baseline Road... I've been here almost 35 years, and it's flooded off and on for 35 years out there. We don't feel like filling this area will contribute to the flooding to any great extent. It may slightly increase, it may not. We do plan on following all the recommendations from Public Works concerning the buffer areas around the whole site. We did a study, had FDN do a study to determine the wetlands area, and we're staying out of all the wetlands, not encroaching at all into them. We've had one access point for the entrance to this site, and it's going to be the existing access point that's there right now and has been. We do not plan to take any other entrance other than the point that's there right now, the drive that's existing. Although the area is zoned R2 on the land use plan, it is commercial. At the present time, we don't have any exact idea of what we're going to put in there, but we're trying to get it up, get it looking good. We will grass it and maintain the grassing on it after construction's taken place. I'll be glad to answer any other questions that you all may have concerning the project.
Commissioners, you got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of this application as written with all staff recommendations.
There's second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, if you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Chairman Latour?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vogel. Application's approved.
Well, that's our regular agenda. Any comments from anyone?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I just want to thank city staff. There's a lot of work goes on behind. This is our first semi-virtual meeting. To make it happen, I know it took a lot of work, and I'm sure Robinson Auditorium Security will better address the social distancing issues out in the lobby that was mentioned. And where else can you get a venue of the river with all the cottonwood fluff floating up and around, so close to the location of Krieger's Pub, but so far away from it opening up? Thanks.
Amen. I'd like to thank the commissioners and also the staff, and those of you watching, for putting up with us, making our... Watching our mistakes in this first go-around. But we're glad to do it. Anything else to come before the commission? If not, we're adjourned.